I've asked for this public meeting because I know from my own experience in boardification, the public can often feel left out of the superintendent search process. Because, of course, it has to be a confidential process. However, the overall process and criteria for selecting superintendents will be shared with parents and community leaders, who everyone is depending upon board to make good decisions that we need to continue success for improving our public spaces. I would dare say the selection of superintendent is the most important vote that you will take as an award of education winner, and you need to select someone who will be a good partner with you in your work. Reforms, I'm sure you are aware of, by now is a very difficult one, which can upset various constituencies. However, if you have a strong partnership with a good reform superintendent, and are focused on putting children's interests first, I believe you can accomplish great things for our children. So, to begin with, I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Colan to provide for committee with an overview of timeline and selection process, as well as describing criteria that we developed to select a superintendent. Then I'll ask a few questions, and then other council members can ask some questions, and I'll open up to the public in the audience for your questions. Well, thank you, Mr. Colan, and the floor is yours.
Sure, but thank you for having us. A couple of things, just to underscore your point about confidentiality, the committee that's not voted on the... (laughter) The committee, the selection committee, which I'm assuming that all of you know about that committee, includes parents and administrators, teachers, board members, and so forth. They're working on a set of competencies that were going to require, in addition to qualifications of the new superintendent. That document, which is still in a draft form, has not been approved by the committee. Or I would have brought copies of it, but we'll certainly make sure that you get copies of that as soon as it's ready. The committee has met a number of times. It's chaired by my colleagues, Dr. Jose Colón-Rivas and Robert Cotto Jr., and met with the group a number of times already to develop this process, to do the RFP for the hiring of the new superintendent, the search for new superintendent. It's going to an organization called Ray and Associates, which is one of the leading superintendent search firms in the country. We've looked at three of them, and they all were three of the leaders, and this one was the best background and price. It's good to be able to get both of those. They are working now with Robert and Jose on the final draft of their agreement. The process actually for hiring a new superintendent has begun already with the work that the committee has done to determine the job description and the competencies that we're going to be seeking for this individual. And they will have the decision made contract in the next few days, when they have a definitive timeline and deliverables that will be available. Like in all search processes, this is, has an intense amount of looking, and for people we can also suggest places to look. If we know that there are districts across the country that have been successfully engaged in reform, we can help with that process if the search firm doesn't know about that. Most of us obviously don't know where to be looking. The goal, and they've agreed to do this, is that we would have a superintendent hired and ready to start as of July 1st. So, that's sort of the timeline process. It's very involved, for sure. Remember, the appointees to this committee are not only there as individuals, citizens of the city, but they're also representing different constituency groups. While the proceedings are confidential, because it's a personal matter, discussions that these members of the committee have in the community are not prohibited. So, if they're bringing the opinions of other parents, or other teachers, or other administrators, that's perfectly fine to do that. What we've got to be careful is to protect the candidates. Once you start getting the leaks of, you know, the superintendent has applied, that superintendent has applied, oftentimes good people will disappear. So, we do have to be very cautious about that until we have the final candidates. The process is that this committee will vet as many as are produced by the search firm, and they are, as a delivery, to give the board three candidates at the end, if there are three that are found. And then those three will be not only interviewed by the board, but have an opportunity to meet the community, and have the community give us some feedback about what they heard from these individuals, and whether or not the people that are in the finalist group are, bring the type of qualifications that are required for us here in the city.
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned when I, when we first did this, that I was going to back off the committee as soon as there was an election that has happened, and Beth Taylor is the new member of the committee, and the chair is no longer involved.
Thank you for that clarification. Do you want to talk a little bit about the search committee, the search firm? What is some of their recent, do you, can you give some examples of some of the recent searches they've conducted for different districts?
Do you have a few factors that you have there?
Yeah.
That was one of the setting factors.
All right, thank you. So, a couple of them, let me find the page, because that was one of the, one of the factors in selecting this particular, Ray and Associates, they're out of Iowa. A couple of key districts that they've been working with, they've assisted the Boston Public Schools, Baltimore City Public Schools, Cambridge is in there, Cambridge, Massachusetts. I want to say Charlotte Mecklenburg County, Montclair Public Schools. So, they're kind of smallish cities that they've been above, but they've also been in larger cities as well. And so, when I, you know, speaking personally, you know, just looking at them, they, some of these do compare well to Hartford in terms of the work that they're trying to do, the type of policies that they're working with, and the similar types of challenges. So, and I believe that this, this particular document, which I'm reading off of, is the proposal that Ray and Associates presented, and I believe that's a public document at this point, so, you know, if you'd like that, we could certainly provide that for you. You can see the full list.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
(inaudible) Absolutely, no, it's not public, so it's not our decision. All right, that's, that's, and that should be very standard. And that clarification. Good. So, let's see, how many, for example, how many people in total are on the committee?
People, there's 12 or 13 folks in the committee, and we'll just flip to them so I can give you precisely who they are. So, we have four board members. Jose Colón-Rivas is the co-chair, as in, I'm one of the co-chairs. Beth Taylor, Richard Larrin, we're two board members. There's three parents, Mariah Esqueline, I want to get her, yeah, correct me, Samaria Smith, is a parent, I think, global communications, been entirely certain. Jack Suarez II. And we have two principals, Gail Allen Green and Melanie Brady, both principals of Buckley and STEM, Maggie S. Fisher. We have two teachers, Mario Guerrero, who was the 2013 Teacher of the Year, and Tamika Knight, who was a Milky Way Award winner, I think she teaches at STEM, sorry, STEM, Maggie Fisher. One corporate representative, Marley Gibson, from Travelers, excuse me, she's also part of the Harvard Alliance. And then one kind of representative from higher education, Frigga Nieves, from Capital Community College. And if you'd like, I can submit this list to you guys, and you can circulate it to the other members of the council, if you'd like.
Thank you, Debbie.
Sure.
Okay, do you have any questions? (inaudible).
Thank you, the evening to the chair. My question is more regards to the potential start date, being July, and if I remember well, the current superintendent's position ends, or her past ends in June. So, is there any, like, room in between to, for a smooth transition?
Well, the goal is that the first of the two superintendents act at the same time. So, the goal is to have one on March 30th, and another one to start on July 1st. They will, in the back, if we, if we get someone, hopefully we have this in June, and that offers an opportunity for the two of them to work together, but they won't both be employing a superintendent at the same time during the transition.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
(inaudible). Yes, all right. (inaudible). I wonder, Board Chairman Colan, you mentioned that we were evaluating the search firm, looking at, as you said, the districts that have successfully engaged in reform. So, I wondered, in that context, if we should infer a definition of reform, so that if the committee is, is, if the search firm, my committee, are looking at other districts that have successfully engaged in reform, to reiterate, are there certain features that you think do or do not constitute reform that we have looked at here in Hartford, dating back, I would say, to Dr. Adam Ossman, where, let's say, a feature to reform might involve school choice, portfolio of schools in choice, school best budget, fiscal incentives related to test words, so, can you say first? If there are any criteria for reform that qualify, disqualify a search firm in utilizing such a, such an approach? I'm not sure I'm explaining it the best way, but if we're giving down this notion that we want to find districts that have been involved in implementing reform, how do we define a reform, so we can understand how to look at applicants and the, those that come forward as candidates? Can I explain a little?
Sure. The issue around reform, as you know, from my perspective, as, you know, an old hand at this over two years, I don't think there is anything but reform involved in public education. I don't care what style of reform it is, but it has to be reform. It has failed largely, and there's plenty of activity that would suggest that that's happened. We have told people who have asked us, are we holding ourselves accountable to the seven principles of reform we currently have? And we've said, no, we're not. Why would we do that? Some of them don't work, and not the ones that you mentioned necessarily, but we have not been good at parent engagement. It has fallen off the agenda for years, despite, you know, all of the, you know, we're doing better, we're doing better, we're doing better, sure, but we never did anything about that. We've done virtually nothing of any, of any significance about ELL in the city. Virtually nothing. 13% in our schools, and we've been evaluated as doing that poorly. Wouldn't you say that's true, Robert? I mean, largely, that, you know, the study that was done by Merrimack Interactive suggested that we had lots of problems there. So, the reform as we know it, or the reform belief that poverty had nothing to do with a child's ability to learn, it doesn't all stand up. So, it's really important that we're looking at candidates that understand what needs to be done to produce youngsters in our city who can read and work and raise families with more than minimum wage. Now, how that happens, or what reforms we use, don't matter as much as, do we do it? Do we get it done? And if we, our current reform has not done it completely, and that's partly why we're in the transition. So, I think that, you know, the argument about what the word reform means, you know, we can argue about that forever, because everybody has a different notion of what that means. But if it's reform versus some form of public education that predates reform, then I think, no, we're not going to be going back to that. We can't. We have, we have a city that has, now, you know, catastrophic level of chronic absenteeism. We've been told for the last several years that we were getting better and better at the average daily attendance rate, until we looked at chronic absenteeism, and we, again, Hartford comes out as one of the worst in the country. Our kids don't go to school. And in the schools where, you know, for all of us who talk about tests are bad, that tests aren't the thing to do, where tests are low, chronic absenteeism is a cause. So, there are many problems, many issues that a superintendent needs to address here, but needs to address in concert with a wide range of other services across the city. This is not the island of 960 that runs a school system. It's 960, 550, capital, you name it, all working together to make this work. And, you know, I would, I think that largely, we've not done that well enough, and so we need a superintendent now who's going to be focused on how do you build? We needed a shakeup when we got Adam Ossman. We didn't, and we got it. But the next leader needed to be a builder, and that's what we have to find, someone who's going to build this relationship with funders and foundations and so forth in a way that makes more sense to the final result, which is the improvement of the lives of our children. And it's just not happening in any significant way. When you look at some of the schools in this chronic absenteeism, and talking about two-thirds of kids are out of school, as many as 30 days a year, you're not going to learn anything at that level. And we have the worst amount are pre-K, K, when you need vocabulary skills, and they're not coming to school. And then the kids in ninth grade, frustrated by not being able to read, are not going to school. So, I think, you know, a new superintendent, however you define reform, reform over how do you get a city to build a constituency around chronic absenteeism, New York City has done it, they're seeing improvements down there. It's possible, but it needs this holistic approach, and that's what we hope we're going to find in this area.
So, therefore, in doing the search through the committee and then looking at the search firm itself, is it possible to tease out whether the individual being sought, being recruited as superintendent, has a history or an inclination towards himself or herself assuming much of the responsibility and guidance within the system? Accountability to the board directly, the principals, the teachers, through their direct efforts, differentiated from, let's say, contracting it out? So, if you have, let's say, an after-school reading program, if I'm not mistaken, in some cases, we have a contract infirm, we specialize in that, and indeed, we bring them into the city to devote their expertise to improving reading with after-school activities. Now, is it possible to ask the firm and superintendent applicants whether they have experience and skill, do it within the system rather than contracting it out? I think that's what I'm asking, because there's...
I imagine, certainly, you know, discussions with, with candidates of how you do this kind of work is certainly a legitimate question.
Because, you know, as you know, maybe controversy as to whether some citizens in the city would like to rely upon resources existing in the city, and perhaps training residents of the city to engage in those projects themselves, rather than $600,000 or whatever it is to an outside firm in order to run such a program, as an example. So, is it possible that there would be a slant or an emphasis on drawing that into your resources as opposed to contracting with other firms?
Good question. You know, not certainly one of the qualifications that we've established for the new superintendent, that they must do that in order to qualify, but in terms of interviews about how you do things, I think, you know, the way you do this cost-effectively and get the result, important. Not the, you know, sort of the repositioning of money and no result, but how, if you've got experience doing this in a way that you've seen a better outcome than you might have otherwise, I think that's a legitimate round of question.
I think the substance is, if we, if we develop our own strength through the guidance of the Board of Education and the superintendent, so that once the contract ends with the outside firm, or rather have a, a firm have a two- or three-year contract, and then leave the city, reiterate that developed resources among parents, teachers, paraprofessionals, and other individuals to continue the technique, apply the technique on their own initiative with their own duration, rather than rely upon other expertise, the expertise maybe it's still in the outside. So, I think that's a second, which I'm trying to relay, or with you perhaps, in my previous presentation.
I'm wondering, I understand that four competencies are still being discussed, I haven't approved yet, but I'm wondering, either one of you can speak a little bit about what being considered for the four competencies, don't you?
Sure, sure, yeah, for the top one. At the moment, we have a draft of different areas that we'd like to, different areas that, where we've described what are the sorts of competencies and skills and experience that we'd like to see. So, I'll just give you a few examples, and then, you know, then you guys can get the list up when it's ready. So, for instance, leadership, so, we've kind of come together and said, you know, is this a leader that has collaborative, in terms of assessing and improving the culture climate of the Board of Education? Is this a person that has demonstrated leadership in terms of leading, particularly individuals at the Board of Ed, and then also groups? Do they serve as a spokesperson? Have they done that? Do they have that experience before, in terms of being the spokesperson for the district, for a district? Another example. Instructional management for the success of all learners. We really want to make sure that this is a person that has demonstrated competency and experience, and making sure that, that our schools are able to, like, instruct and actually assess and improve achievement for all kids, because we're really struggling with, particularly subset of children in our, in our district, children with disabilities, for instance, children with other disabilities. Under that bullet, just to serve an example, as an example, have they, do they understand the research on learning and instructional strategies? Do they demonstrate the ability to design appropriate assessment strategies so that they can improve instruction? Do they have that sort of experience in leading other folks in doing that sort of work? Those are just some examples. There are, I think, 11 or 12 different topics, and then just stopping at any of those. So, ideally, what would happen, once the committee kind of finalized these and signed off on them, then they would go to the search firm, and the search firm would basically synthesize them and put them together in such a way that it becomes like the flyer or the posting for the particular position, and then that would be public and would be shared with folks. But it's, I think what Matt was saying is that it is, I think it's a much broader skillset than what, than what we've kind of thought about in the past, you know, whereas if, you know, disagree or agree, like Matt was saying, you know, if you have Dr. Adam Ossman, who's kind of the disruptor, you know, we're looking for someone that has a much more broad skillset, working with parents, for instance, the instruction and assessment piece, and so on and so forth. So, again, I think it's a much more holistic skillset that we're looking for.
Any questions? The council here?
I just feel constrained, we have such an opportunity in this session, at least, to raise some questions, which of course don't have to be answered right now. There's some relationship between the board and its chairman and the city council and its president and all members. Would the, the search firm and ultimately the superintendent be queried about his other relationships with other bodies in the city, not just for the sake of a budget, ultimate bottom-line budget, but also, let's say, communication with the council and its education chairman and the rest? We each year, of course, have a presentation, one or two during the year as much as budget time, but would the criteria for the superintendent and questions asked by the search firm is the relationship with the rest of the city, let's say, the council, the parent organizations, the NRZs and so on, as well as the board itself?
Can I ask a clarification? Okay, so, Dr. Deutsch, can I just ask clarification question? Are you asking whether or not individuals that apply to be superintendent will be asked as to how they would interact with city council and other stakeholders? Are you asking whether that would be a question? Or are you asking, will other stakeholders outside of superintendent search committee will be engaged in, in kind of developing a profile for a new superintendent? Which question are you asking?
I think you're actually asking the formal question. Because when you use the word holistic, which you and the chairman have used in terms of approaching the superintendent, he or she is a very prominent figure in the city, whether it be New York City Bluebird, or Rich Portales, or somebody else, a very prominent important figure, as is the board chairman, and a holistic approach, you'd think would also engage the parent organizations, while would treat some of the critical events, the city council, and many communities, the neighborhoods, and so on. So, how would this be incorporated in the choice of the search firm and then ultimately of a superintendent? These are the record in doing that, wherever the issue is coming from. I guess that's what I'm trying to, the formal question.
Well, one of the, one of the competencies that is part of the, kind of, the grouping, and again, we could share this with you guys, it's kind of in draft form, but it's, you know, ready, and certainly the bullet points. One of them is political influence and governance, and so the committee did discuss the idea of having a person that's demonstrated ability. I think that's important, demonstrated rather than potential. So, demonstrated ability to involve stakeholders in the development of that policy, and I think that's, you know, the idea that you're getting at is, is this a person that has actually done the sort of kind of political work and engagement of involving people to get support for the policies that you want to implement, and the things that you want to do with the district? That was an important concept as part of the, it'll be part of the profile, the flyer, the posting that we'll have, and then I think certainly we'll turn this into a set of kind of criteria that will vet the person when they come through, or the folks that do apply.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One last question myself. Are you considering a core competency or demonstrated ability? Are you considering a core competency or demonstrated ability in traffic or to get to be able to produce actions and decisions that are student and children focused and secure?
So can you be a bit more specific? Because I think generally when we think about superintendent, we think about someone that is dedicated to kind of improving achievement and someone that's dedicated to supporting kids' learning and wellbeing. So I think generally speaking, that's true.
And I can think back to the history of Hartford, think of the numbers of superintendents who really put adult issues ahead of what I would call children issues. And that's my concern, that's why I... I think it's very easy, it's very easy for us as adults to get caught in the adult issue of how we all work together. But the real issue is what are we doing to improve those for children? And I think that too often that gets lost sight of in a lot of the challenges and confront for districts already just occurred.
I mean, I think, again, as part of it, when you look at curriculum planning and development, for instance, in the success of all learners, so we've asked, does this person demonstrate the ability against teaching and learning specifically for children at all levels, elementary, high school, special education, and the adult educational level? Is this a person that has the ability to identify valid or reliable performance measures for student achievement, for instance? And I think that's, that is part of it as well. So we kind of have that specifically stated.
Thanks.
No problem.
So this time I'd open up to the audience. Is there any one of the public who'd love to ask a question? Introduce yourself and ask a question.
Hi, my name is Dan Thompson Daye. I'm a resident for Fred Boner Easton. I have a couple of issues. One is, I've been told that if we're concerned about the children from young age, which is preschool, then why are we not providing them with library time inside of the school system? I've been told that some of the schools have budgets for library rooms, but they do not provide a library. They use the budget for other things inside of the school. That's one of the things. The other thing is, I've been hearing about students not going to school and that they start at the age of preschool. I remember when we were younger, the teachers, if you didn't show up for school, either they would come to your house after school's over to speak with your parent and find out what happened to you. Or a phone call was made to your parent at their job. And I notice those things are being done. So if a child is young and they're not coming to school, obviously it's the parents not bringing them. So the parent needs to have a conversation with the teachers or the teachers need to have a conversation with the parents. And then when they get to the ninth grade, then you know it's a child that's not coming to school because they've already developed that pattern. And what happened to our truancy officers? I don't see them on the ball either. So those are some of the concerns. If we're going to be getting superintendent, I'm hoping that someone who is willing to take the time to make sure some of these things are corrected, where the parents are more involved. And sometimes the parents don't know anything and they don't know who to speak to. And maybe there is an issue at home. So then maybe that's where our teachers can step in or our social workers who are in the spirit can step in and take some time to go out to some of these families and speak with those parents.
I do want to comment, I think some people have heard me say this before, but more than fifty percent of the schools are without library services. The rest of them either have part-time services or they have a full-time library staff member. And as you might imagine, the ones that do are the national award-winning magnet schools. The community schools are without libraries. If they do have libraries, if you want to just test this out, don't take my word for it, go to Clark School where the library's in the basement with books that have broken binders to them. There are weeding policies, and weeding is a technical term in the library where you get rid of books that are no longer used, where one school sends books that they don't want anymore to other schools that have no libraries. And that's how they get their collections outdated material that goes to those places. Because there's also been changes in the way transportation is budgeted. Many of these youngsters don't get to the public library during the day, but rely on the public libraries after school, fortunately, in order to connect with the library. Libraries are not just about reading, they're about discipline around studying and research and reading and vocabulary and interacting with other people. And you don't have that particularly when you're expecting youngsters to be at the top of their game. It's going to be very significant. One of the, one of the aspects of our reform is student-based budgeting. And it's all of this, what's the word they want for principals? Autonomy and the autonomy largely unless there's a, unless there's a, you know, a non-starter. And libraries are not non-starters. If a principal decides the library should go over to get an English teacher, that's going to happen. And so there's a, there's a range of things that school principals look at in order to be able to use the money that they would give it. Whether or not that works, we see that happening with the lack of counselors in some schools, a lack of libraries in many, many, many of the schools. Actually, two-thirds of them are insufficient or deficient in that particular area. So it is important to hear, you know, what is this instructional skill set that a principal or that the superintendent has and how does that, how's that been brought to bear? And how he or she has developed over time? And does it include libraries? Does it include counselors? You know, what, whether they use in their toolkit in order to, you know, to lead the schools? I've also said before, this isn't new, while we've had some, some improvements along the way, for sure. We're still far too behind the eight ball when it comes to thousands of kids who don't have it, don't have this option. And it isn't, it isn't acceptable any longer to just say that that's the way it is. So we've got to figure out a way to do this. And I think that's reform too. I don't think that it's, it's reform or no reform. It's reform that gets you where you need to be, gets the children to be able to read and be able to get jobs that allow them to raise their families successfully. You know, what more can you ask for?
Thank you.
Mr. Hulzer? Love to ask two questions. Robert and Matt, I've heard Dr. Dean speak. One is, what, if any, is the plan should the initial search from the current timeline not produce candidates that are, you know, quote unquote, up to snuff according to the current community? I'm sorry, the current committee or the board? And should the committee advance two or three names and the board decide that actually, nice for our committee, but we're not quite there yet? And what is the expected timeline then, should that happen? Is there anything kind of that will be documented about that? Any mythology or whatever people is thinking about what should happen? That's the first question. And beyond that, watch out, we'll stop there.
So getting back to four of our board members who sit on the selection committee don't have sets of the other five and produce three candidates who we all don't like, you know, we have a problem usually. I don't, I don't think that that's going to happen. I fully trust the four, my four colleagues to be able to produce candidates who the full board can vet. You know, I might have to eat my words on that, Mr. Hulzer, but if I do, I'm ready to eat them. I do think that I can trust my colleagues to find with the rest of the search committee the candidates that we need.
First part was, the committee, the committee who have the upcoming candidates. Is there a second stage after the search continues?
They don't, yeah, they go on it until, until they've got the candidates to send to us. They're being asked to send a maximum of three, but it could be two. Hope it's not one, but at least two.
You guys have any questions, girls?
Yeah. Musical chairs. The other question is really, you know, what is, just, this is maybe more, you guys are two individual board members that happen here and can speak to, you know, what you think will be attractive to great candidates in Hartford. But do you see some things that need to happen now in the city and really over the next six months in order to, I guess, send a message that there is a strong foundation for, you know, at least a firm level of cohesion among board members that obviously have differing levels of, like, different ideologies, but the same commitment to reform, however, I think Matt put it here, however one wants to define it, define it by outcomes for kids? You know, are there just some thoughts that you two as individual board members would care to share about, you know, what needs to happen over the next six months to really ensure that the messages are being sent that this is a great place for a superintendent to come forward? Thank you.
Robert, I'm going to reach him up to him. I think that Hartford, wherever we recruit, has a difficult time. The nature of what people hear about our city often limits candidates. And I think what we have to do is make sure that we're clear about both the challenges that we face and that we want someone who will take that on, that this is not a job that you come and you're comfortable all the time. You better not be comfortable, right? You want to be challenged all the time. We have huge, huge mountains to climb and so that's important. But I, you know, I'm not really sure what your, what your point is. I think the, the issue about what we do have, and I think you all know this, is we have policy already. There's a policy that is driving this school district. That policy, the last I looked, is still policy of the school district. That's the policy we're going to share with the search firm for sure. There have been discussions about whether or not some of that policy should change. And I indicated the other night that if the board has any thinking about significant policy change, that we get that out of our system right now and do that before we get engaged in the superintendent search. So the last thing that we can, should do is hire someone and then say, oh, by the way, we're now changing the policy. And what's going to happen then is we're going to lose that superintendent. So we've got to make sure that we're going forward with a resolve about what the policy is here in the city and have the board speak with a resolve around that particular policy. And so, you know, I think we have a number of months to work on that. There's an election next month for officers of the board. I told the mayor today that I will not stand for reelection as board chairman. And so, you know, this is going to be someone else's job to lead Board of Education here in Hartford. I'll stay on the board through the end of his first term, but, you know, I need to move on and do the work I need to do with the library.
And just speaking as an individual, Paul, because I don't want to, you know, speak as a whole group. I think, you know, what's attractive to a person that's looking to come into Hartford is that, I think it's a, it's a school district in which you have a lot of people that are committed to improvement, generally speaking, to improving schools, making sure their children learn, making sure they get the best for their kids. And I think you can see it over the last couple of months that parents are really engaged and they're really energized because they do want improvement. And I think that's something that we can definitely build on. I think what, as far as Board of Ed is concerned, we often disagree about how to get to that improvement and what are the specific mechanisms to do that. But I think that overall, when you look at the board, we're all generally pushing and saying, well, how can we get better? How can we improve? And I think that's definitely something that, you know, the board and parents have in common. It's just a matter of how to get there, I think, is the question. Also, I think, and I want to kind of paraphrase what the mayor had said a number of months ago in that I think the mayor is committed, and this was in a public meeting, and we were talking about what are the policies that have worked and what hasn't worked and what has fallen through. And I think, I think to a certain extent, the board members that are there now have kind of, can recognize what has worked. And we can all say, okay, this may have worked very well. And we can recognize what may have not worked well or worked differently. And I think, so we'll probably, I think I differ with Matt a little bit on this one. What we'll probably kind of ask the superintendent is to give us a look as well and say, well, what do you think? You know, bringing your strengths to the table, what do you think are things that you can improve on? You look, you know, you look at what we've done, we've done school choice, we've done magnets, we've done this, we've done that. You know, what is your skill set? So I think we can kind of give the next person a little bit of leeway. And I think that may be attractive as well in that we have a general idea of what we have. We have school choice, you know, for better or for worse. What can you bring to that, to that issue that can improve it and make it better and make it work better? I think that's an opportunity for someone to come in where they're not creating a new school choice district, but they're coming in with a school choice district that has a number of problems and a number of issues and that they're going to need to address those in a creative way because no one's really, no one's really solved that issue, besides in the majority of districts in, around the country. So I think that's what, what we have to offer. It's a small community. It's not as big as New York City, it's not as big as Boston. It's a much smaller place to be in and I think they'll, if they, if the person wants to, they can be very well, well-connected and engaged in the community where the governor's right there, the mayor's right here, the council's right here. It's not, it's not a place where there's a tremendous amount of distance of these folks. So that's what I would say, you know, if I was making a pitch to the, to the next superintendent, those are the things that I would bring out.
Fucking, it's just one last, unless anyone else who's here wants to ask them first. I think I'd be, I'm listening, I didn't relay some of the concerns that we've been hearing from parents about certain things that used to be done in the schools that they value and that somehow in the process of reform have been diminished with that. And even recently, it was last night, Councilman McDonald went to the, dealing with learning certain skills within the school system, high schools, for instance, in architectural design, construction management, perhaps aviation and so on. So there's, there's some discussion related to that as to whether a new superintendent or search committee would endorse or assert the need to continue, to continue or return to some aspects of school that used to be. So you could say that's reform or reaction or limiting reform. Let's take shop classes, for instance. You know, a lot of people come to us as council, I assume you also, say, have you been to more shop classes than your school? Or as we just said, some don't have functional libraries, you know, as opposed to, well, my kids want to, can have it and so on. I don't know what the city is in. Some people say that, are there or should a new superintendent and the school board itself, despite giving principals certain budgeting or time, still have certain standards? For instance, obviously for cleanliness and maintenance and custodian care of the cafeteria. I assume or hope that the principals are required by the board to maintain certain minimum standards of health, safety, cleanliness and so on. Even if it requires a level of custodians or cafeteria workers that they achieve and I think is necessary, you see? And likewise, going back to the structure, if there, there are some students who feel they're not going to college, they'd rather go into a trade. Should the school system, through the superintendent and the board, ask principals, no matter what their own preferences are or budgeting tendencies, that they still need to maintain shop classes, home, whatever they called it in the old days, which some people still seem to value? So in other words, having certain standards across the system, even though... So in other words, having certain standards across the system, even though reform has tended to give principals somewhat more, more time, you see, and how is this figured into the choice of the search firm and then choice of the principals in terms of his or her endorsement of certain minimum features that schools may used to have and they still seem to miss? And the last thing we're talking about is after-school services, the after-power services within a school building as a community institution. And some parents, again, ask us, why can't the gym be open until seven or eight at night? And sometimes they tell us, because the principal doesn't want to do it, they'll leave their money or something. So how will we approach a certain kind of standard in reforming throughout all schools, even though there's some selection by the principal?
So, thank you, Dr. Hulzer. I mean, I can't give you definite answers, but I just want to address a few things. I think we have heard from the committee that there are things, there are programmatic things that are no longer included in schools that people want, so we've brought those concerns. I just wanted to point out that Mr. Boland has, Chairman Boland has talked about the need for libraries, for instance, it's kind of like his trade, right? It's a business that he's in, and he's very passionate about it. I've spoken about automotive shop, particularly at Buckley, and re-instituting that. As far as I know, we don't have a, I haven't had a report on whether that's going to come through or not to kind of re-institute the auto shop at Buckley. So those are the things that we've heard. What I would say is that we have, you have, the public has the committee names, and I think we'll, I think a good idea would be to somehow publicize the fact that these are the folks on the committee, and kind of share their contacts. You're free to contact them. And I think one key aspect of the superintendent search process will be that once we have three finalists, that we have three finalists, and I hope we do, that we'll be putting these folks in front of the community, and I think at that point will be a key kind of moment in which people in the community can say, these are the things that are happening in my school, these are the things that I think are great, and I think there are improvements, and these are the things that I think are lacking. And I think that's what we hope to have happen during the process, is to have people kind of come forward and share their concerns about the very, the very things that you described, in kind of a very open, very public way. So I'm not, I don't have any answers for you about that, but I think what I'm trying to explain to you is that we hope to have a process finding superintendent, which the person will have to respond to those questions and say, how will they respond to those concerns and legitimately concerns of people in the community that are attending the schools?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll just add a little bit to that, but I know that there are certain standards that are required by principals when they submit their budgets. They're probably mostly related to things like special education law and various laws that require certain things to be done. There, to my knowledge, are not standards regarding numbers of genders, although we did talk about that when I was on board, we tried to review that board, we didn't get that done. And there are certain, we need to be standing regarding values, or really, that's an important aspect that needs to be looked at. Certainly, in the system of autonomy, there could be also a set of standards that, that require certain things to be done in every school, certain, that's within the realm of possibility in our autonomous system, but autonomous system, of course, like we have heard. Anyway, that's all the information for you.
Any further questions from members of the public? Any further questions from the members of the council? All right, well, I'd just like to thank you, this Chairman Boland and Mr. Crowe for attending, it's been very informative, and look forward to further discussions as we see the process unfold. Mr. Crowe?